Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. It's Thursday, August 5th, 2021. It is 2:05 PM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. Vice Chair Commissioner Edwards is excused today. To my right is Commissioner Carolina Mejia. County Manager Ramiro Chavez to my left. And Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell to the right of Commissioner Mejia. I see the County Treasurer Jeff Gaddman with us. And Brad Murphy from our Community Planning and Development Department is in the room. And I'm going to let the folks, our guests, kind of introduce their team. I know them, but from the meetings with the work group, but the other county folks might not. So I don't know if this is a job for Carrie or Tessa. Go ahead and introduce your team and then we can get going.
Terrific. Thank you, Commissioner Mensah. Good afternoon and thank you so much for inviting us. I'm Carrie Martin and I'm a planner and project manager with Department of Enterprise Services. We're very excited to be at this milestone with the draft EIS out for public comment. And we're glad to be able to be here with you today and give you kind of the high level overview of our key findings. So the rest of our team, Ann Larson is the Director of Government Relations at DES. And she is between meetings here and should join us shortly. And I'd also like to introduce three key members of our consultant team who will be doing the presentation today. Tessa Gardner-Brown is a Senior Environmental Planner with Floyd Snyder. And she's the Project Manager for the EIS Consultant Team. Ray Outlaw is a Senior Engagement and Environmental Planner and also with Floyd Snyder. And he's our Deputy Project Manager. And Carmen Martin is Senior Environmental Planner with Environmental Science Associates. And she's our Project Lead for CIPA. So thank you again. And with that, I will turn it over to the team.
Yes, thank you all for being with us today. We are, we are so excited to be at this milestone for the project and to be sharing the key findings of the draft EIS. And as we start, we like to also share just a note of appreciation for the collaboration that you've maintained with us throughout the project and in support of the project. We really are hopeful that the body of work that we've prepared and that we'll go through today will support decision making so that a solution can be implemented. And there's a lot to cover in this briefing. We've just done a ton of work for the draft EIS. And so Ray, Carmen and I will present a range of information from the draft EIS, including work that was done by our technical team in the hopes of giving you an update on the key findings. And on the screen, you'll see the topics that we'll cover today. We'll keep a pretty quick pace so we can get through the full slide deck. We do have stops throughout the presentation for questions. And it seems like that might be the best approach that we hold questions to them, given that we have multiple format happening. Otherwise, I would suggest that they could be popped into the chat. But yeah, I think with that, let's go ahead and get started. Ray will go through the first couple of slides to give you a background and then we'll dive into the key findings after that.
Tessa, the board members here and our staff are in the boardroom. We don't have keyboards or ways to access chat. So just let us know when you think it's the right time for questions on an area and we'll just respond to your cues.
That sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again. Some background on the project area, which includes the 260 acre Capital Lake. That is managed by the Department of Enterprise Services under long-term lease with DNR through 2028. This area extends to the northern point of the West Bay Butt Inlet. And the West Bay is not managed by Enterprise Services, but the project actions may occur in West Bay, as we'll talk about a little bit later. So that's why it's included in the project area. The parks and public spaces adjoining Capital Lake and within the jurisdiction of Enterprise Services are also included. And the project area does not extend upstream of Tomwater Falls into the Deschutes River because that area would not be directly affected by the project. However, the EIS recognizes that changes upstream in the watershed could affect conditions in the project area, given the interconnectedness of the system. And you'll hear us reference the North, Middle and South Basins. Those are labeled on the map there. We'll just reference those from time to time during the presentation. Briefly, a stop on the project goals. So Enterprise Services has been developing an EIS for the project area since 2018. That work, the EIS work is called Phase Two. The Phase One of Long-Term Planning began in 2016. And Phase One resulted in these shared goals that were established by stakeholders. The goals are common across all the alternatives. So regardless of which alternative or alternatives you might support, these goals apply to all of them and allow for an unbiased evaluation of these very different alternatives. You'll note at the bottom of the slide there, an additional, the addition of environmental and economic sustainability, which were added by stakeholders to be mindful of fiscal and environmental responsibilities. And you'll see how these become a benchmark for how Enterprise Services ultimately selects the preferred alternatives. These were also included in the purpose and needs statement for the project. In a moment, I'll show you some maps of the alternatives. But briefly, before we do, we wanted to note some similarities across all the alternatives. Another term you'll hear us mention are action alternatives throughout the presentation. And you'll see that in the EIS as well. That term collectively references the Managed Lake Estuary and Hybrid Alternatives and differentiates them from the No Action that's used for comparison purposes. So the elements that are common include initial dredging for construction across all the action alternatives. Those initial dredge materials will be beneficially reused in other areas of the lake basin to construct habitat. And that beneficial reuse is a significant cost savings compared to disposal. All the action alternatives would also require maintenance dredging, but those activities vary by location and frequency. And Tessa will talk a bit more about that in a few slides. The alternatives all include boardwalks in the Middle and South Basins, a boat launch at Marathon Park for hand-carried watercraft, and reconstructing the dock at the Interpretive Center similar to today. And a pedestrian bridge, or bike and pedestrian bridge, excuse me, would be added along Fifth Avenue to support multimodal access around the water body. And decontamination stations will be added to help prevent the spread of invasive species. Again, that's another topic that we'll talk about in more detail here in a few slides. Something you don't see here that we get asked a lot about is formal swimming facilities. Those are not included in any of the alternatives. For background, operating formal swimming facilities does not align with the mission of Enterprise Services. And there's really no indication that that's going to change in the future. The former swimming beach in Capital Lake, which was operated from 1964 to 86, was operated by the City of Olympia, not the state. It is important to note, though, that the project does not preclude an entity such as Olympia Parks and Recreation from negotiating a lease to operate formal swimming facilities should water quality conditions be suitable and following separate environmental review. Okay, so on screen is the Managed Lake Alternative, which will retain the Fifth Avenue Dam in its existing configuration, but it would be overhauled to significantly extend the serviceable life. The reflecting pool within the North Basin will be maintained. An active recreational use will be restored in this area. Sediment would be managed through initial construction dredging and then recurring maintenance dredging in the North Basin only. Sediment from construction would be used to create habitat areas in the Middle Basin to support improved ecological function, habitat complexity and diversity. And that's what you see in these green areas within the basins. Sediment would continue to accumulate and over time would promote a transition to freshwater wetlands in the South and Middle Basins. Then I'll note the boardwalks, which are these, this brown line here and here. You'll see those on all the maps that look essentially the same. The same with the Fifth Avenue Bike and Pedestrian Bridge across the north end of the basin. And the Dock and Boat Launch would all be constructed to improve community use. As we switch to the estuary, the primary difference is the Fifth Avenue Dam would be removed and an approximately 500-foot wide opening would be established in its place. This would reintroduce tidal hydrology and return the area to estuary conditions where salt water would mix with freshwater from the river. Sediment would be managed through that initial construction dredging and recurring maintenance dredging within West Bay. Dredge materials from construction, again, will be used to create habitat areas in the Middle and North Basins to promote ecological diversity. The tide flats would become the predominant habitat type. And you see the same boardwalks, pedestrian bridges, dock boat launches we talked about earlier. This alternative also includes stabilization along the entire length of the Deschutes Parkway to avoid undercutting or destabilization from tidal flow. And existing utilities and infrastructure would also be upgraded or protected. And we switch to the hybrid alternative, which is similar in many ways to the estuary. It includes the same, removing the dam, the same 500-foot wide opening, boardwalks, pedestrian bridge, et cetera. Tidal hydrology would be reintroduced in the western portion of the North Basin and to the Middle and South Basins. Within the North Basin, a curved approximately 2,600-foot wall. And you can see that, again, that's this brown arch here. Would be constructed, that would create an approximately 45-acre saltwater reflecting pool. A freshwater ground or groundwater-fed reflecting pool was also evaluated. Construction and maintenance of this smaller reflecting pool, combined with the restored estuary conditions in much of the basin, gives it the term hybrid alternative. Sediment, again, will be managed through initial construction dredging in the basin and then recurring maintenance dredging within West Bay. We get asked a lot about tides. And so what you see here on the bottom left is an inundation chart. So tides would be similar to what you would expect from Butt Inlet. The inundation chart on the bottom left helps us understand that about 80% of the time, there would be water in the North Basin. And then on the right-hand side, you see representative tide charts from winter, summer and fall days. And what this tells us is we would expect the largest periods with low tide and exposed tide flats to occur during the summer, during the day in summer and during the night in winter. And my last slide before we pause here for a brief break, just a list of the chapters in the EIS. I've been talking a lot about Chapters One and Two. Tessa and Carmen are going to jump in and talk in detail about Chapters Three through Five and then we'll close out with some discussion on Chapter Seven. Okay.
I do have one question. And that is, in the hybrid approach, the wall that would be constructed to contain the reflecting pool, I'm assuming there is a provision in that for flushing that water out?
That's right. There would be tide gates installed along the length of the barrier wall to allow tidal flow in and out twice daily to support circulation.
No questions on this section?
One quick question. I was, first time I saw this, I was all focused on other elements. And I wasn't really thinking about, like, when it's all done, traffic flow and cars? And are there any differences between the three with respect to? And again, I know there's different lengths of time, of disruption and all that. But let's say 10 years down the road or whatever. Is there any differences in how cars would be able to move around between the three alternatives?
Carmen, do you want me to start with that one? And then, or do you want to start?
Yeah, I can start. Yeah, long-term, there wouldn't be a difference in traffic circulation. All alternatives, you know, will maintain existing traffic network. And all alternatives will have the new bike and pedestrian bridge, which will be a benefit. I will say, so, and we'll talk about this later, under the estuary and hybrid, the Fifth Avenue Bridge will be replaced. So that'll be a benefit and that'll increase the serviceable life of that important piece of infrastructure. I'll say anything you'd add there.
That's exactly what I would say too.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So this slide shows you a look at the 14 environmental disciplines that we evaluated with the interdisciplinary project team and that are provided in the draft EIS. And Carmen and I will go over each of these. And we like to give the fair warning before we start that the slides are dense. And so don't feel pressured to read everything on the slide. But we wanted to include information so that if you had the slide deck before, after the meeting, you had an opportunity and it could stand up alone. We also like to remind people that this is meant to be a briefing. We're going to hit the high points and the draft EIS is your best resource for the more comprehensive discussion. And so with those caveats laid out, let's go ahead and get started. I'll go through four environmental disciplines, I should say this, and we'll break for questions and then Carmen will go through five and we'll break for questions again after that. So for this project, we built a numerical model to compare the project alternatives quantitatively to evaluate maximum water levels and flow velocities, the extent of potential upland flooding and then sediment transport through the project area. And we used a state-of-the-art modeling system. On the screen, you can see the data that we used to develop and to calibrate the model. And the model simulated conditions for each alternative for two types of storm events, a river flood and a tidal flood. And then we evaluated those conditions with and without relative sea level rise. And we should note that the methodology for this work and the findings were reviewed by independent third-party experts. So what the model found was that the No Action and the Managed Lake Alternatives, they have the highest maximum water levels overall. And under those alternatives, the greatest extent of flooding occurs during the river flood events. And this makes sense because when, during a river flood, you have this large volume of water coming down from the Deschutes River and there's that constrained exit point at the Fifth Avenue Dam. And then under the estuary and hybrid alternatives, during the major tidal flood events, the water levels are higher for that flood event than what would occur under the No Action and Managed Lake Alternative. And that makes sense too, because the Fifth Avenue Dam would no longer be in place as a barrier between the basin and the tidal fluctuations. And then relative to sediment deposition, we saw that under the estuary alternative, sediment deposition in West Bay is three times higher than the No Action and the Managed Lake Alternatives, and it's four times higher under the hybrid alternative. Next slide. So this graphic, this graphic's in the EIS and it shows the predicted annual movement of sediment for each alternative. And to orient you quickly, the darker shades of red indicate higher levels of sediment accumulation and the blue shows your area's erosion. And you'll see here that under the No Action and Managed Lake Alternative, which are your left two tiles, that sediment deposition largely occurs in the Capital Lake Basin. But there is throughput of suspended sediment through the Fifth Avenue Dam. And then under the estuary and hybrid alternatives, your right two slides, you'll see that some sediment deposition still does occur in the Capital Lake Basin, but more moves into West Bay. It largely deposits on that eastern shore. And the rate of deposition reduces the further you get from Fifth Avenue. And we modeled mitigation measures in response to this. But ultimately, the recommended approach to managing sediment for all alternatives is to incorporate maintenance dredging into the alternative. And then for the estuary and hybrid alternatives, to have a sediment monitoring program annually so that dredging can be responsive to actual environmental conditions. Next slide. This is also from the EIS. It's a look at the output for river flooding. And the warmer colors, your reds and your oranges, are the highest water levels. And we think that this graphic just does a really good job of showing the difference in water levels across the alternatives and the difference in overland flooding, which you can see here is most significant for the No Action and the Managed Lake Alternatives. And on the next graphic, this is our output for the tidal floods. It's the same scale as the other ones, so you can put them side by side to compare. And you can see under this storm event, the estuary and the hybrid alternatives have higher water levels than the No Action and the Managed Lake. But the extent of the overland flooding is pretty similar in the downtown and port areas. And that's all explained in more detail in Section 4.1 of the EIS. So for navigation, we evaluated a range of data to establish baseline conditions. And you can see that data on the screen here. And one of the key items that we did was work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Port of Olympia and the Marina's to understand when, under existing conditions, does maintenance dredging occur? So that when we look at how future conditions could change, we know, we know when maintenance dredging should be triggered. Next slide. And so based on the numerical modeling, we were able to predict how much sediment may deposit in the different areas of West Bay under each alternative. And so you can see in that table, the projected annual rate of sediment deposition for the areas that are shown in the graphic. And based on this information and our understanding of current dredging conditions, we estimated a frequency for how often dredging would need to occur in the future to maintain navigation in West Bay. And the maintenance dredging frequency is estimated at approximately six years under the estuary alternative and approximately five years under the hybrid alternative. The dredging would occur in those colored areas, but the whole thing doesn't get dredged every time. The dredging moves around and hits the areas of sediment deposition that are affecting navigation. And that dredging schedule is described in more detail in Section 4.2 of the EIS. And so what we found, what the draft EIS describes, is that there would be potentially significant impacts to navigation in West Bay under the estuary and hybrid alternatives. But the important "but" is that those impacts could be mitigated to less than significant thresholds with that recurring maintenance dredging that I just described, combined with an annual sediment monitoring program to ensure that the dredging is adaptive and responsive and happening where it needs to happen. And again, 4.2 is your EIS reference for more detail. So moving over to water quality, to start the analysis, we looked at a decade's worth of data. Thurston County had collected data in the lake from 2004 to 2014 and all of that was available to us. And we used that data to understand water quality trends and conditions. And then we also used data that we collected for the EIS in 2019 and we're collecting it again this year to verify trends that we had observed in the 2004 to 2014 data set. And then after that trend analysis, we looked at Capital Lake relative to state water quality standards and in comparison to other lakes in the region. And then we did the same thing for Butt Inlet. So we evaluated available data, identified trends within the data and then compared the data to water quality standards and to other inlets and Puget Sound. And all of that is summarized in Section 3.3 of the draft EIS. And so some of the good news that we report is that based on the data, we see that water quality in Capital Lake is relatively good. There are only occasional violations of state water quality standards, primarily related to summertime violations of temperature and dissolved oxygen. And the Department of Ecology has standards for aesthetics and those are violated by that dense community of aquatic plants that grows out there every year. And so that aquatic vegetation would need to be managed under the Managed Lake Alternative. And then for Butt Inlet, water quality data do show that dissolved oxygen concentrations are low and that they do violate state water quality standards seasonally. And to put that into perspective, we have this figure on this slide here that shows you that low dissolved oxygen concentrations are typical of inlets and Puget Sound. Next slide. So how does water quality change under the alternatives? The analysis describes that water quality is expected to improve under all the long-term management alternatives, but that there would still be seasonal and occasional violations of water quality standards under all of the alternatives. And I'll explain that. For the Managed Lake Alternatives, there would be those same seasonal exceedances of your dissolved oxygen and your temperature and likely exceedances of pH and total dissolved gas too, which are typical of lake environments. There wouldn't be a change in the impact to dissolved oxygen levels in Butt Inlet. And relative to that, if the Managed Lake Alternative were selected as the preferred, Enterprise Services could evaluate whether the nature of discharge through the dam could be modified to minimize that impact on dissolved oxygen concentrations in Butt Inlet. And then for the estuary and the hybrid alternatives, there is expected to be an improvement in dissolved oxygen concentrations in Butt Inlet relative to existing conditions. And the analysis predicts that those improvements would be minor to moderate. And it also describes that there would continue to be seasonal violations of water quality standards for dissolved oxygen in Butt Inlet and in the restored estuary. The nuance here is that in that restored estuary, the area could be interpreted as meeting water quality standards, but it's not expected to meet numeric targets for dissolved oxygen. We also looked at conditions in the reflecting pool. And because the reflecting pool, under the hybrid alternative, would be filled with higher tide waters, there would be higher dissolved oxygen and less algae than on the estuary side. And we also evaluated what water quality conditions would look like in the reflecting pool under a freshwater concept. And that's, analysis is provided in Appendix E of the Water Quality. And that's, analysis is provided in Appendix E of the Water Quality Discipline Report. I should note before we leave this discipline that the water quality analysis was reviewed by an independent third-party expert, and it's all provided in section 4.3 of the EIS. Okay, last one before we break. Pause for questions. So for aquatic invasive species, there are 15 aquatic invasive species documented in Capital Lake, including the New Zealand mudsnail that we found in 2009 that closed Capital Lake to all water-based use. And, um, the analysis established a baseline understanding of the aquatic invasive species by evaluating past surveys, management plans, and conducting a, uh, an extensive literature review. And so a key finding of the analysis was that the New Zealand mudsnail is not expected to be eradicated under any of the project alternative, alternatives. And so what that means is in order to meet the goal of restoring recreation, there would have to be measures in place to avoid or reduce the spread of aquatic invasive species. So that's where we get the decontamination stations. Under all of the action alternatives, they would be installed at the entry and the exit points of the water body. And we have this photo, we think it's pretty helpful. It's an example of a decon station, and they're often trailer-mounted hot-water pressure washers. They've proven to be highly effective in preventing the spread of invasive species, um, even though they're fairly simple design. And that's not the kind of boat we'd expect to see in Capital Lake, but we still like the photo. Last note on this slide is that all of the action alternatives would have an adaptive management plan with specific measures, like monitoring of the project area and adjacent water bodies or evaluating chemical treatments that could be effective against the New Zealand mudsnail. So the EIS found that under the managed lake alternative, the population and densities of the aquatic invasive species overall would be pretty similar to existing conditions. And relative to the New Zealand mudsnail, the density of it would be the greatest under the new, under the managed lake alternative because it really thrives in freshwater. Whereas under the estuary and hybrid alternatives, the New Zealand mudsnail distribution may be wider because it could establish in Bud Inlet. But the analysis concludes that if it establishes in the shorelines of Bud Inlet, it would not have a significant impact on native aquatic species, given that the density would be quite low because of the saltwater environment. And then the last thing is that under the estuary and hybrid alternatives, that reintroduced tidal flow would eradicate a majority of the aquatic invasive species that are currently in Capital Lake, and that would be a substantial benefit. Let's pause for questions. Jeff?
Yeah, so that last slide there, with the broader distribution of the mudsnail, does that create maintenance and/or financial obligations for the state or local government? Uh, because now it's been dispersed?
Great question. Where that shows up in our analysis is the question of, okay, it's in Bud Inlet under the estuary and hybrid, and we know under those alternatives that we expect to maintenance dredge in West Bay. And so would those dredged materials have the New Zealand mudsnail in it? And if so, we know that that, that material needs to go upwind now because it's got invasive species. We looked at that pretty closely, and what we determined was because the dredging would occur in those deep areas, like at the ports' vessel berths, and it would be that fresh sediment that's just being deposited from the Deschutes River, that we don't anticipate a population of New Zealand mudsnail in that sediment. And so therefore, that sediment would still be suitable for in-water disposal. Um, relative to other potential concerns related to biofouling, we don't anticipate that because the, the densities would be low. Um, and so that's really the extent of the economic implications that are described in the document.
Uh, could you go back to the last slide on water qualities? Uh, the one before that? I want to make sure I understand something in here, um. I guess I'm trying to understand the statements about dissolved oxygen. No change to Bud Inlet dissolved oxygen managed lake. And then is there, was there a similar bullet on the hybrid and estuary? Yeah, I guess that's what I'm looking at, um.
So the analysis suggests that under the estuary and hybrid alternatives, that dissolved oxygen concentrations would improve in Bud Inlet, and those improvements would be minor to moderate compared to existing conditions.
Okay, I think I read something wrong, and I just wanted to make sure. I, I thought I read something suggesting that there was a, sort of a reverse effect with the estuary on dissolved oxygen. I wanted to understand that, but I guess I read it wrong. You're saying mild to moderate improvement?
Correct.
Which one here?
Can I ask on that?
Sure.
So, um, on the D I S, it refers to saying, um, the minor to moderate improvement, but, uh, the Department of Ecology, um, you know, stated that it would be a major improvement. And on the report, it says, you know, um, Department of Ecology will, I don't remember the exact words or, you know, but it seemed like the Department of Ecology was not asked on this, and I was just wondering, um, why, you know, why that data is like different from what the Department of Ecology had put out?
It's a great question. Thanks for the opportunity to answer it. I usually, I start by answering this question by saying, first, both, uh, both Enterprise Services and Department of Ecology both anticipate an improvement to dissolved oxygen concentrations with the estuary and hybrid. The difference is really, do we consider it minor to moderate or much, or substantial? And what we have been directed under the State Environmental Policy Act, which guys our EIS, is that the agency must consider a worst-case scenario when there are data gaps or uncertainties. And in this case, that means that a worst-case scenario is reduced improvement. And so that's why the scale of water quality improvement is described as less than what Ecology has found in their other modeling is really to be consistent with that SEPA guidance. We have coordinated with the Department of Ecology, um, on, on this, and we expect, of course, to get comments on this analysis. And, and that's, that's exactly what this comment period is designed for.
So I'm glad the Commissioner Reamea asked that question because I had it backwards. I had, and I might have explained it backwards when I gave a report to the board because I thought you, I thought you had said, in responding to that question, Ecology's work had to consider worst-case scenario, and you weren't necessarily applying that, so therefore, that was the difference. But it sounds like it's the opposite.
Right, correct.
That's better, or that's, that's interesting to know. And I'm looking at the bullet that got me confused. It's, it's up there right now. I just want to make sure I understand. The bullet under the Deschutes Estuary says, "Water quality similar to shallow estuaries in South Puget Sound with seasonally low dissolved oxygen. Significant impact when compared to existing conditions." So impact which direction, what do you mean by that, significant impact?
Right, okay, so what that bullet is saying is, and it's, this is the tricky part of the analysis, is that SEPA requires us to compare conditions, compare future conditions to existing conditions. And what's out there today is a relatively well-oxygenated lake. And if that lake is changed to an estuary, it's a completely different water body entirely. And estuaries in Puget Sound naturally have low, low dissolved oxygen. And so when we compare it to existing conditions, it's going to have lower oxygen levels. And the way that's described in the, through an EIS framework is having a significant impact. But we always like to bring it back to that comparison, like that figure we showed on this couple of slides before this, that, that is typical of inlets in Puget Sound.
And, I mean, I know from other committees and work that I do that, you know, estuaries are incredibly important and powerful ecological areas. So it sounds like we want, whatever they do naturally is what we want them to do. So it sounds like that's not an issue, the low dissolved oxygen, because it's consistent with their natural function.
That is what we've heard from Ecology as well, that, you know, that the natural conditions under, um, an estuary assume that there isn't human-caused variation. And so they're making a similar statement that you are. And Carmen is going to describe in the next couple disciplines about the, the other benefits of an estuary like to fish and wildlife habitat and, and wetlands. I agree with you.
Anybody else? Are we going? Okay, oh, Jeff.
Yeah, I just, would you go back to the slide where you're showing the oxygen levels in, yeah? And explain the colors, please?
The colors are, um, the number of non-compliant days relative to the dissolved oxygen standard. And so the darker colors means more, more violations, or in water quality terms, we call it exceedances of the standard. And so you just start to see this dark, this dark blue, and the farther you go into the inlets, we see that there are lower, just naturally lower dissolved oxygen conditions. And so that, this is an Ecology, um, graphic, and we find it helpful to put it in perspective for exactly the question that we were just asked.
Thank you. I just wanted to know what the numbers and colors meant. Thank you.
Okay, good to go.
Okay. So for fish and wildlife, the analysis considered, uh, long-term adverse impacts and beneficial effects based on expected changes in ecological functions. The data used for the analysis included peer-reviewed literature and other documents identified as best available science during the earlier Phase 1 planning process across the, the categories listed here. The analysis focused on fish species groups and wildlife indicator species with special consideration to listed species and species of cultural and tribal value, such as Chinook and other salmon. Next slide. Um, first, and as described in the EIS, there are no naturally producing native populations of Chinook, steelhead, or bull trout within the Deschutes River. And this is because Tomater Falls is a natural fish barrier. The majority of the salmon in the basin are hatchery origin, although non-hatchery origin or wild salmon do enter the basin. The EIS found that continued configuration as a lake under the no-action or the managed lake alternative would limit the ability of the habitat to provide the full suite of ecological functions required to fully sustain populations of salmon. Conversely, these alternatives would maintain the freshwater lake, which is an important feeding area for local bats. Under the estuary and hybrid, the conversion of freshwater lake to an estuary would reestablish a natural gradient of freshwater-saltwater. And the EIS describes that this would improve the fitness of outmigrating juvenile salmon and would benefit many of the species of importance to local area tribes. The analysis also recognizes that due to historic declines, estuary habitat is a scarce and valued habitat in the region as compared to deep-water freshwater habitats, which remain relatively abundant. Next slide. So the EIS determined that active lake management under the managed lake would have some minor benefits to fish and other aquatic species, although fish use would remain similar to what's there now. Under the estuary and hybrid, the EIS found that conversion of the freshwater lake to a tidally-influenced estuary would substantially benefit salmon and other marine species by improving those migration conditions I was, um, talking about. And benefits would be somewhat muted under the hybrid alternative, but still substantial. The EIS determined that the loss of freshwater habitat under the estuary and hybrid would be a significant impact on bats that use Capital Lake for foraging. And these are unavoidable impacts for which no feasible mitigation was identified. Um, more information on this can be found in section 4.5 of the EIS. Next slide. The wetlands analysis considered the long-term or the permanent loss or change in wetland habitat or functions. In order to compare existing wetland conditions against expected changes brought about by the alternatives, the data sources listed here were used to estimate the, the presence and extent of wetlands in the study area. Uh, it's important to note that this was a planning-level analysis, so wetlands weren't delineated, delineated, rated, or surveyed as part of this EIS process. That would occur later during final design and permitting of the selected alternative. The analysis considered three broad groups: vegetated wetlands, deep-water habitats, and tide flats. And using these broad groups helped to characterize all the important freshwater and estuary habitats present in the basin and in West Bay of Bud Inlet. Next slide. So, uh, the wetlands analysis, um, uh, describes that there would be a transition from deep-water habitat to vegetated freshwater wetlands under the managed lake in the middle and south basins, which would provide a minor gain in wetland function. Under the estuary and hybrid, reestablishing tidal influence would convert the lake to an estuary system. The EIS describes that estuary marsh and tide flats are highly valued habitats in the region and found that reestablishing estuary habitat would be a substantial beneficial effect. Under all action alternatives, habitat areas would be constructed using the dredged spoils from initial dredging, and this would create greater habitat complexity under all action alternatives. And additional information on wetlands can be found in section 4.6 of the EIS. Next slide. Potential odor impacts were assessed in response to comments received during the EIS scoping period concerning the creation of tide flats under the estuary and hybrid alternatives. The EIS describes how odors produced by tide flats have not been studied in depth in the literature. And because there is little reliable quantitative data on tide flat odors, the analysis qualitatively describes potential impacts in terms of the odor characteristics commonly used in odor assessments, these being frequency, intensity, duration, and offensiveness. Potential air quality impacts were assessed by calculating total emissions of criteria, criteria air pollutants, focusing on dredging activity, which will produce the most equipment emissions. And the greenhouse gas calculation considered the entire lifetime of the project and includes the construction and subsequent maintenance dredging. These total emissions, uh, were annualized over the project time horizon. And in addition, the EIS considered the qualitative differences in carbon sequestration potential of the alternatives. Next slide. So potential odor impacts, um, uh, well, I should say, because odor perception is highly variable, it makes an impact determination subjective. But the EIS did find indicators that there may be a tolerance for natural estuary odors. And this was based on a lack of odor complaints during the most recent drawdowns of the lake and a lack of odor complaints at nearby estuaries, coupled with the presence of vibrant waterfront activity. In consideration of the variable frequency and duration, the EIS found that odor impacts from the estuary and hybrid alternatives would be less than significant. But at the same time, the EIS acknowledges that odor influences people differently, and for a certain portion of the population, any change in odor would be considered objectionable. While the estuary and hybrid would have the highest combined construction and operation-related greenhouse gas equipment emissions, the vegetated marshes established under those alternatives are expected, expected to sequester more soil carbon than would be expected in the open water habitats under the managed lake. Next slide. Land and shoreline use impacts were assessed by examining any direct changes to land use and the compatibility of the alternatives with adopted plans. Recreational impacts were assessed by considering whether recreational opportunities would be improved, impeded, or remain unaffected by each alternative. And in addition to the data sources listed here, uh, the analysis considered input from the community sounding board and work groups, as well as from an onsite park user survey completed in the summer of 2019. Next slide. From the survey, many people indicated that they would use the area more if water-based uses were restored. In terms of how the alternatives would restore such uses, all alternatives would restore non-motorized boating and would include the, the new boat launch and rebuilt fishing dock. There would be some qualitative differences in how people would experience boating. Under the managed lake, boating would be possible during all daytime park hours. Under the estuary and hybrid, portions of the basin would become tide flats and would not be accessible by boats during low tides. And while formal pub, public swimming facilities are not included as part of any of the project alternatives, the EIS recognizes that swimming facilities could be established in the future, as Ray described earlier. Next slide. So for all action alternatives, increased opportunities for community use was found to result in substantial beneficial effects. Increased flooding is expected under all alternatives in the future and could impact adjacent land uses in low-line parks. The no-action alternative and managed lake alternative would have the most potential for impacts due to the higher maximum river flood elevations that Tessa was, was describing earlier. Under all action alternatives, proposed uses were found to be generally consistent with plans and policies of the jurisdictions affected. Next slide. For cultural resources, a number of methods were used to describe Cultural resources in the study area, including review of previous studies and databases In coordination with local area tribes and the Olympia Chinese-American community. Results of a filled inventory were combined with information from previous investigations to create a comprehensive summary of the historic filled environment of the study area. The EIS considered listed historic resources as well as historic resources that the project team evaluated for potential eligibility For listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Notably, the evaluation identified a potential new historic district that's called the Deschutes Basin Project Which encompasses Capital Lake and several individual resources as well that are listed in the table here. Next slide. The analysis and related coordination with the tribes found that there are no documented traditional cultural properties within the project area. However, the absence of documented traditional cultural properties shouldn't be interpreted to indicate that they don't exist in the project area. The nature and location of traditional cultural properties are unique to tribes and are often kept confidential within tribes. The EIS found that tribal values would continue to be adversely impacted under the no action and managed lake alternatives Because of the continued loss of connection to the natural environment and disruption of natural ecosystems. The project would be subject to consultation under section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. Mitigation for adverse effects on historic properties would be identified through that consultation process With the federal lead agency, affected tribes and the State Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. As part of that, formal eligibility determinations, intensive level surveys and additional measures would be undertaken. Next slide. In terms of impacts to archaeological resources, the EIS found no clear differentiation in impacts among the action alternatives. In terms of historic resources, there would be greater potential for impacts under the estuary hybrid Because a number of potentially eligible historic resources would be affected. Of note, if the Deschutes Basin Project Historic District is determined eligible for listing under the Historic Register, Removing the Fifth Avenue Dam and elimination of the reflecting pool would would diminish the integrity of the resources, essential physical features. And this was determined to be a significant, potentially significant impact. Conversely, the EIS recognizes that removing the dam would reestablish pre-deschutes basin project Thailand's and estuary functions Associated with earlier use patterns of estuary. Under the hybrid, the EIS found that the barrier wall for the reflecting pool would mitigate impacts On the Deschutes Basin Project's Historic District if it's determined eligible for listing. And that's because it would retain a a smaller reflecting pool. Additional information on cultural resources can be found in section 4.9 of the EIS. And I think we break for questions here.
I have a few. Okay, on page thirty-four, in regards to the odor, you said There were comments received. Is that community comments? What kind of comments?
Yes, it was, yeah, community comments, comments from the public during the the scoping process. There may have been some, some organizations that commented on that, but I don't recall.
Okay, and then on page thirty-seven, You mentioned, you know, there's the no formal swimming facilities. And but you said it could be in the future. I didn't see that on the EIS, maybe I missed it, but You said it could be in the, it could be established later. Is that under all of them? Is that under only certain? Is it only in the hybrid or is it in the estuary or is it also, does that include the managed lake?
We assume it could be established under any of the action alternatives. And it is described in the EIS in the recreation section. And I think maybe in one of the earlier chapters, Tess, I can't recall. And as Ray was describing, you know, Swimming, providing swimming facilities isn't within the mission of Enterprise Services, but this project does not preclude another entity from Getting a lease and developing facilities if if determined feasible.
But if it were to open up to swimming, I mean, would that affect like water quality? Would there be a certain amount of years that would?
I didn't hear the last part of that. Would there be a certain amount of what?
Of years, we would have to wait.
We, you know, that was kind of, it was outside of the scope of the analysis of the EIS, so we really didn't look at All the stuff that would have to be taken by an entity to develop swimming facilities there, so I'm afraid I like can't answer that.
And then my last question has to do with The bat colony on the EIS. There was a very Our section in regards to the bat colony that's there, but I didn't see any, you know, section really describing And the impact, you know, I would have on the lake colony if you were to go in the hybrid or estuary. But it doesn't really, you know, talk about how That specific bat colony is kind of overpopulated just because of the conditions that have been laid out by the lake currently. And so I was just wondering about that and 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 also, you know, I didn't see any Other species like really mentioned in the impact on how that are not aquatic. That would benefit from, you know, either having a an estuary or a hybrid model back.
So you're talking about potential benefits to upland species from a estuary hybrid?
Yes.
Do you have specific ones in mind? I'm just curious.
I know, not not specific ones in mind.
Okay, yeah, and I think your comment on the bat population is a really interesting one. I've jotted that down and And I'm hoping to get a form, I'm hoping we receive a formal comment on that on the draft EIS because I think I'd like to look at that more closely with our technical lead and And get their thoughts.
Tony, can you answer that?
I'm just curious under the fish and wildlife section, why it was not included the elimination or eradication of the invasive New Zealand Mud snail. And that seems to be, you know, on the, under the hybrid or the estuary. The main objectives, at least from my point of view, is to enhance the natural environment. And by not including the eradication of this invasive species seems to be counterintuitive.
Well, Tess, I don't know if you want to, I'll just start. I think As Tesla was describing earlier in the aquatic invasive species slides, Based on The data and information available, we understand that the population of mud snails will decline once The basin is opened up to tidal waters. They don't thrive in The saltwater to the extent they do in freshwater, so that's kind of a a natural limit to their population. So there, we didn't identify any active management steps needed because of that. And Tess, anything?
The only thing that I would add is that there isn't a known chemical Or other approach that can be used at this time to eradicate the New Zealand mud snail and so Like Carmen said, they would continue to exist under the estuary hybrid, but there would be much lower densities. The adaptive management plan, as we described, would outline, you know, continued Work toward evaluating other treatments or other opportunities to contain, but the best thing we can do at this point, knowing that they'll still persist is Contain them through decontamination.
Can you remind me, I'll get to you Jeff, one second. Can you remind me what the, what is the mud snail, what problems it causes?
That is a question that WDFW continues to explore. Ray, and I I should defer to WDFW and the analysis in the draft EIS Rather than try to summarize that here today, not being the expert. And just because it's something that they're, they're still kind of working on right now relative to what the real impacts are.
Okay, Jeff.
Yeah, I've got a question about snail too. Has there been any kind of study, not necessarily in our basin, but in any basin, does the mud snail thrive as well In flowing water like it, like we would have with the estuary or hybrid as opposed to still water?
I am not aware of a study relative to current velocities. I would have to look into that more.
Anyone else? Questions on this area? Okay.
You guys, you guys have great questions on the invasive species. We are taking notes on these. These are questions we haven't heard yet, so they're really good. Thank you.
That's our current horror film monster is the mud snail.
All right, moving right along. Okay, so visual impacts were assessed in terms of the key factors that are commonly used in visual assessments. These are spatial dominance, scale and contrast and compatibility. In terms of compatibility, the analysis recognized, recognized that a visual element may change substantially as a result of the project, but remain compatible with its surroundings. The analysis considered the landscape and its uniqueness and agency policies related to the visual landscape, and this was mainly Enterprise Services Master Plan for Capital Campus and policies adopted by the cities of Olympia and Tom Water. Four key viewpoints were selected for preparing visual simulations of what the basin could look like. These are locations where the alternatives would be expected to have the highest potential for observable changes. And they were also locations of most interest to the Community Sounding Board. The simulations were developed using bathymetry and tide elevation data to depict areas of open water and tide flats As well as schematic design info developed for the project elements. Slide. So this first key viewpoint is from the Capital Campus overlook. It'll be much easier to see the differences and features when you look at the larger presentation in the EIS. But for purposes of this briefing, I'll quickly walk through these panels. The three along the top show the estuary alternative at a high tide, a mean tide and a low tide elevation. At a high tide, which would occur approximately twice daily, there would be full inundation with constructed habitat islands in view. As tides recede, tide flats would appear in place of open water. At low tide, also occurring twice daily, water would be visible only in the river channel. And importantly, the majority of the day, the the north basin would be at least partially inundated. A tide and a low tide. Along the left, you can pick out the twenty-six hundred foot long barrier wall. And at low tide, water level in the hybrid pool would drop a bit, exposing some tide flats near the shore. Slide. Here's, here's another view of the north basin, this one from Heritage Park at the Eastern Washington Butte looking south. From this viewpoint, tidal fluctuations would be visible under the estuary alternative as shown in the bottom two panels. The managed lake would look much like it does today and under the hybrid, you would be looking out at the hybrid Pool and the barrier wall in the distance as shown on the top right. The wall would reduce the area of open water viewable in the far distance. And I should point out the walkway and the foreground would need to be regraded to meet up to the elevation of the barrier wall walk. Next slide. This one's from the Marathon Park Boardwalk looking northeast towards downtown Olympia. Here, the hybrid barrier wall from the estuary side of the basin presents as a more dramatic visual change. As tides recede, as in the right panel, more of the barrier wall would be exposed with the tide flats. The wall would block views of the reflecting pool from the west side of the basin and it would become the dominant feature of this view. These and other key viewpoint simulations in the middle and south basins are included in the EIS. Next slide. Go skip this one, go to the next one for time. Okay, so under the estuary alternative, The EIS found that views would change substantially from those under the no action alternative Due to tidal fluctuations and water levels that would expose tide flats. But despite these changes, the impacts were determined to be less than significant, given that the landscape would remain visually unified and harmonious with its setting. Under the hybrid, the EIS found that the barrier wall would not be harmonious with or contribute to a unified landscape, particularly Is viewed from the Deschutes Parkway and from Marathon Park. The impacts on views in the north basin could be reduced with mitigation, but would remain significant. And you can find more information on this in section 4.10 of the EIS. We break for questions here.
Don't hear any, anybody? We're good.
Okay. Environment health primarily addressed sediment quality, but also considered potential public health risks Associated with estuaries that were brought up by members of the public during EIS scoping Such as exposure to mosquitoes and hazards associated with mud flats. Sediment quality data collected by the EIS project team in Capital Lake and those data publicly, publicly available in West Bay were compared against regulatory criteria To determine if the sediment poses a risk to human health and the environment. Slide. The analysis found that the sediment quality in Capital Lake is generally good with the exception of high sulfides, which may be toxic to benthic organisms. Under the estuary hybrid, minor to substantial beneficial effects on sediment quality are expected in some areas of West Bay With the cleaner sediment that would be deposited in the bay. Numerical modeling shows that there would not be a net upstream movement of sediments from Bud Inlet under the estuary hybrid alternatives. So that, so no significant change in sediment quality in the Capital Lake basin would be expected following dam removal. And the analysis found that any changes in the availability of habitat conducive to mosquito breeding from any of the alternatives Is expected to result in little to no change in exposure to mosquito or vector populations. In terms of tide flat risks under the estuary hybrid, the EIS does, does describe that tide flats can pose a risk and notes that nearby recreational areas In the South Sound have caution signs posted, which is also proposed to reduce this potential hazard here. Next slide. For transportation, most impacts will occur during construction. The primary operational impact would be from maintenance dredging. The analysis considered if there would be any decrease in roadway capacity through lane or street closures or an increase in traffic delay Due to maintenance dredging. Potential transportation benefits were also considered. Next slide. So for all action alternatives, provision of a new Fifth Avenue bike and pedestrian bridge with support and And improve pedestrian and bicycle travel and is considered a substantial transportation benefit. Under the estuary hybrid, replacement of the vehicular Fifth Avenue Bridge is considered to provide a substantial transportation benefit. Next slide. During the times that dredge materials being hauled, the EIS found that it is likely that traffic at some intersections would degrade to level of service F. There may be an opportunity to transport some material by rail which could reduce impact somewhat. For the estuary hybrid, this is a potentially avoidable impact if the dredge material is transported from the site by barge. And additional information on long-term transportation impacts is in section 4.12 of the EIS. Slide. The Public Services and Utilities Analysis took into account the potential for the alternatives to interrupt Or create increased demand for utilities or service providers. Potential impacts on utilities from flooding and extreme tide impacts, including from sea level rise were considered. The analysis also describes the potential impacts to lot and other dischargers under the alternatives. And this is because water quality in Capital Lake has regulatory implications to utilities that discharge to Bud Inlet. Next slide. Under, under the no action and managed lake, the predicted maximum flood levels could potentially affect stormwater and other utility infrastructure if not mitigated. The EIS notes that this could be mitigated with changes to the BERM design in Heritage Park included in the Olympia Sea Level Rise Response Plan. The no action and managed lake would retain Capital Lake in its current configuration. If ecology requires lot and other dischargers to implement additional measures to treat and improve water discharges, The most stringent targets would be expected under these alternatives, which would be a significant impact. Under the estuary hybrid, long-term impacts would mostly be associated with restoring tidal hydrology, which would which would introduce salt water into locations where some utility infrastructure would be vulnerable to corrosion. Design measures are included to replace existing metal outfalls, but other low line utilities would remain vulnerable. Um, and because of this, mitigation is included to monitor and replace those low line utilities. And section four point one three of the EIS has additional information. Next slide. The economics assessment looked at the long term economic impacts and potential benefits related to four primary topics. Downstream, economic activity, downtown development, demand for and value of recreation, and demand for and value of ecosystem services. The assessment uh for these four topics required different methods, which is reflected in the different types of data that was gathered and listed here. Key informant interviews with planners and other officials, as well as developers and real estate experts, were an important data source. And let me note briefly that methodology for this work and the findings of this work were reviewed by independent third party expert. Slide. The assessment found that all project alternatives are likely to produce benefits for downtown Olympia, assuming they are implemented in a way that is attractive and accessible. The managed lake alternative would represent the least amount of visual change compared to current conditions and is unlikely to increase uncertainty among potential investors about future conditions. The estuary alternative would have the most visual and environmental changes in the downtown Olympia area. These changes have the potential to create uncertain uncertainty, at least initially among investors, developers and residents in downtown Olympia. One of the key findings from the key informant interview interviews was um was that they felt with an estuary design focused on establishing an attractive and functional estuary, this alternative would be unlikely to produce an a negative impact on downtown development relative to the other alternatives. Next slide. Okay, ecosystem services uh describes the capacity of the ecosystem to provide goods and services that people value. So ecosystem services are largely determined by the type and quality of habitat available. The EIS found that under the no action and managed lake, tribal values would be adversely impacted by the continued loss of connection to the natural environment and to usual and accustomed fishing places. The estuary alternative, on the other hand, would support these tribal values, as would the hybrid, although to a lesser extent. Given the water quality improvement predicted by ecology under the estuary alternative, the regulatory compliance costs for lot are not expected to be significant as significant as is expected to occur under the no action and managed lake. This ecosystem service benefit could be monetized as an avoided cost to lot and its regional rate pairs. Under all action alternatives, the enhancements to trails, habitat areas and restored water based recreation would increase the value of recreation in the basin. And these benefits could not be realized realized under the no action alternative. And there's a lot more information on the economics assessment in section four point one four of the EIS. Questions?
Nope.
Okay, well, I have some good news. We just have three slides on construction, then we'll switch into cost and then a couple next step slides. So thank you guys for bearing with us. Um, okay, so chapter two is where you find the discussion on the potential construction approach for each of the alternatives, and it also includes schedule projections, which you can see on the slide here. And um, many of the biggest construction elements for each alternative, like the dredging and the habitat area, they occur from the water. And that means there would be construction throughout the North and Middle Basins during the months where in water work is allowed. And that equipment is likely to remain in those areas for the duration of several years of construction. And relative to what happens upland, the primary construction staging would occur from Marathon Park, and so the majority of Marathon Park would be closed for several years. And then another up notable upland activity is that under all of the alternatives, the Fifth Avenue Bridge would be closed. And the closure is estimated at about seven weeks for the managed lake alternative and about four and a half years under the estuary and hybrid alternatives. Okay, um, on this one first, we described at the beginning of the presentation that many of the construction activities are similar across the alternatives, which means that many of the construction impacts are also similar. And chapter five focuses on the potential impacts from construction, and the analysis found that in large part, significant impacts can be avoided um if standard best management practices are implemented. We only found five areas where there would be potentially significant impacts during construction, and those are on the slide here. I'll just go over those briefly with the unavoidable significant impacts. So there would be an unavoidable significant unavoidable impact to recreation in the project area because of that closure to Marathon Park for forty eight years, and also just because of the noise and disturbance from destruct construction, which could affect some recreationalists. And then similarly, visual resources would also be significantly impacted from that um disruption during construction. But we also like to say here that many people also find construction quite interesting. And then finally, one of the most significant impacts from construction is that temporary closure of Fifth Avenue. And so the traffic impacts and potential detours that um could be implemented during that closure are described in good detail in section five point twelve of the draft EIS. And then just briefly on mitigation, chapter five um includes potential mitigation measures to reduce impacts during construction. We just put on this slide here the mitigation that could reduce the significant impacts that I I discussed. And so briefly for land use shorelines and recreation, standard BMPs would minimize overall construction disturbance, of course. And then the analysis also suggested that enterprise services could consider constructing that Fifth Avenue pedestrian bridge before they worked on the Fifth Avenue Vehicle Bridge to avoid a closure to the trail during construction. And then for visual resources, the footprint in Marathon Park and in the middle and North Basins could be minim minimized when there are periods of no active construction. And for transportation, a construction traffic management plan would be developed and implemented, and it would include detail like detour routes, haul routes, uh, information campaigns, other measures like time of day restrictions for contractor movement or construction traffic to minimize impacts to the surface streets. And that was a quick flyby of construction. Um, any questions on that before I move into costs?
What did you say would be closed four and a half years?
The Fifth Avenue Bridge under the estuary and hybrid alternatives.
And then so we'll be like going back and forth across the Fourth Avenue Bridge during that time?
Right. Yeah.
Uh, questions anywhere else? Okay, great.
Okay. Okay, so planning level cost estimates. Uh, what you see on the screen is an excerpt from chapter seven, and chapter seven is where we provide our planning level cost estimates, and we outline a number of the assumptions that went into the cost estimates. And the first thing I always say related to this is that chapter is less than fifteen pages, and I highly recommend a read through it if you'd like to get a good understanding of what you're seeing on the screen. And for the cost estimates, we costed design permitting and construction, and then separately sediment management over thirty years after construction. And we did those separately because we know the funding might be different for construction versus long term management. So the construction estimates reflect all of the primary elements of the alternative. So that's your dredging, your habitat area constructions, your boardwalk, the work on Fifth Avenue. And then the costs for thirty years after construction, at this point, they just focus on sediment management. And that's because your other management requirements like uh adaptive management for the habitat areas or for water quality under the managed lake, that gets better defined in the permitting process for the preferred alternative, but we have good information right now on on what the sediment management needs would be. So these are planning level costs, they're based on conceptual design. They have an accuracy variation reflected of minus twenty five to plus thirty five percent. And we develop these using standards from the Association for the Advancement of Cost Engineering. What we also like to point out um and suggest that that everyone review further is a couple more key points in that are reflected in this table, sorry, that was clunky. The first is that there are initial recommendations from the Funding and Governance Work Group around a potential allocation for construction and long term management costs. That's um provided in that middle column there and then described in more detail in the chapter. We also included a column that notes potential impacts if there's a lapse in funding after construction, because we know that's important to consider um relative to decision making. And then finally, that last column includes significant additional costs not associated with our costing exercise for construction and long term management. So these are other costs that could be that could result from the alternatives, but aren't associated with construction and and long term maintenance. And let me pause here and see if there are just any questions of um at this initial point. Jeff, go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay, so yeah, I do that that very first sentence under the potential significant additional cost for the no action. You know, repairs and replacement of Fifth Avenue dam if permits could be obtained, so. Has any, has there been any indication that permits may never may may not be available? Or was any analysis done as to the potential for that since basically the dam isn't doing anything other than creating a decorative piece in downtown?
That's right. We have, yes, what we have unders understood is that um the regulatory agencies are imploring enterprise services in the state to make a decision on long term management before uh permits could be issued for actions that are needed within the basin, including maintenance. There have been um, they have been able to get some permits for emergency measures, but not for your standard maintenance and repair. We know that this is a real consideration, it's important to the decision making, and it's described in some of the bullets that are included at the end of chapter seven, so we point folks there to.
Did that cover you, Jeff?
Yes, thank you.
Just from here and then kind of.
Um, I I have a question, wasn't I I don't remember at the top of my head, but I remember there was an option where lot would possibly have to be moved. I don't remember which option that was, though.
That option is uh not something that we evaluated in the draft EIS, but what I think what you're referring to is that under some under the no action or the managed lake alternative, they would have increasingly stringent requirements from the Department of Ecology for their discharge. And when they consider how would they meet those requirements it under the no action or managed lake, there are significant costs associated with that. And so they're evaluating, first of all, can they lower their discharge to meet those requirements? Or would they have to move? And so there are cost implications of the no action and the managed lake alternative. Some of that is addressed in that second line under that last column, potentially significant costs a lot because of more extensive water quality treatment likely required by ecology. And then we've described that in the document too, but we haven't put a price tag on it. And it's not included as an element of any alternative.
Okay, so I I I was wondering if it was included in the um in the lines here that we're we're seeing.
Um, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Got it, so that would be additional costs on on top of what you're seeing here.
It's not so much moving, it's like lot has lot has budgeted capacity for growth. But if that capacity gets chowed up by by ecology clamping down on its on its treatment, then it would have to growth would have to be accommodated some other way, like an alter. We basically have to build another treatment plan somewhere else to accommodate the growth that we've planned to to use with what's called the Bud Inlet Treatment Plan.
Okay.
So there's that could be a massive cost, obviously, to the community. Sorry.
So uh, I appreciate the the potential significant additional costs we outlined. I do have a question on the managed lake option. And you have um the potential significant cost to compensate for tribal and ecological impacts. Could you elaborate uh on that uh a little bit more? Um, there seems to be a a subtle message. But it's difficult.
That's exactly right. This that notice to say that under the managed lake um that there would be federal consultation with the tribes, and through that consultation, there may be a request for mitigation, and that could be a monetary um request or other requests, and that that would have costs associated with it. And so this is to indicate that that's not something that we can, you know, put a dollar sign to right now, but we expect that it would be part of the conversation. And then similarly related to um ecological impacts, if the regulatory agencies found that the project was not self mitigating, that there could need to be, you know, com compensatory mitigation provided for the managed lake.
Thank you. Could you, I I I heard it at the previous presentation, I know it's in here, but I don't feel like you've said quite as much today about the sediment management difference, like what what contributes to the cost difference between the management um approaches? Um, why is it more expensive to do it one way or the other, just so that everybody here can hear that?
Yep, great question, let me hope with that. So uh um, as I described, we're talking about this second my the third column over the second with numbers in it, and this is about our maintenance dredging. And this is all those costs are associated with the maintenance dredging that would be required for the alternatives. You see here that the maintenance dredging is the highest cost, it's the most expensive under the managed lake. And that's because maintenance, that material that is dredged um at an approximately twenty year frequency would have or is expected to have the New Zealand mud snail in it, consistent with densities that are out there today. What we know is sediment with invasive species cannot be placed into another water body to avoid the the spread of those invasive species, so it has to get put into a truck, truck to an upland disposal site, and then paid for disposal at that disposal site. So that significantly increases the the cost of that sediment management. Whereas for the estuary and the hybrid, although we're dredging more frequently, what we understand from the data and the analyses is that 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 sediment is likely um to be it will occur from those deeper areas where we don't expect aquatic invasive species and that it is likely to be chemically suitable for in water disposal, so we can put it on a barge and take it up to Anderson Ketrone and dispose of it there at a very um at a much cheaper rate. And so that's the that's the difference, the cost driver in that long term management row.
Cool, thank you, I think that's pretty important. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, two more slides and two more minutes, we're doing well.
Perfect.
Uh, I'll be quick on this one, this is just the timeline of our um of our work both to date and heading out into the future. Um, the draft EIS comment period was forty five days, now it's sixty one. So August uh twenty ninth is the new end of the comment date that was announced uh late last week and this week. Um, after the public comment period, the team will begin work on the preferred alternative selection process that Tessa mentioned is in chapter one, and obviously the work needed to complete the final EIS that will include a preferred alternative. The final EIS is targeted for the summer of twenty twenty two, pending, of course, the extensive comments and any additional technical analyses that are required. And our last content slide, just briefly again, note that August twenty ninth um end of the comment period date. Um, so you've got a little bit more time. And then ways to continue to get engaged, most of our um online in person activities are behind us now, we had five office hours and online public hearing. The online open house is still available, as well as the updated kiosk out and around Capitol Lake. Um, so please, you know, encourage people to take part in those as best they can. We continue to get a lot of comments and um and hope we will see more as we progress through this. One thing we're seeing a lot of already is a lot of people expressing preference or interest in one or more alternative. Um, we'll continue to review those and consider those, but what makes that type of comment particularly helpful is there's a why with that. Um, so we can understand why people are making those choices.
Kind manager.
I'm just curious, in in terms of the overall process, why this draft EIS doesn't include a preferred alternative?
I didn't hear the question fully, could you repeat that? I didn't hear the question fully, could you repeat that?
Yeah, sure, why the document, the draft that we're currently under review, does not include a preferred alternative?
Oh, good question, okay. There are two primary reasons for that. The first is that the draft EIS is really the body of information that will be used in large part to support decision-making. And so, Enterprise Services, of course, wanted to have that full body of information available, but also have that available to the stakeholders and allow stakeholder and public comment on it. The second reason, and so, the second reason is that the decision-making process, which is described in Chapter 1, incorporates stakeholder feedback. And to do that in the most informed way, it is best if the stakeholders have access to this body of work before their input is solicited on which alternative could be supported as the preferred alternative. And so, this really, decision-making after this body of work is available, it just allows Enterprise Services and the stakeholders to be most informed.
So it's like giving public an extra chance to comment, you know, it's, we're still working toward that final piece of the process.
That's right, take a look at the findings, if that, you know, providing the opportunity to see the findings, to be educated by those findings, so that we have informed comments and can make informed decisions. That's exactly, that's exactly it.
Okay. 3:32, we're roughly on schedule, anybody questions from any quarter?
I just want to thank Carrie, Tessa, Carmen, and Ray. This has been very informative and I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for making the effort to go to all the different groups. I know you've been out there, and it really helps when we talk to our fellow electeds that we all kind of can talk with this common language and understanding of what's been gone into this. So it's very useful, the time you're putting in.
Thank you, and we really appreciate the opportunity to get out and talk to everyone. And thank you for your really good comments and questions today, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good, that was your.
Thank you.